The Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, and filing of this notice on March 31st, 2020. This notice was on that date posted on the Bolton Board in the Township Office, sent to the Korean News, the Echo Sentinel, and TAP into War, and filed with the Township Clerk of the Township of War, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Mr. Breezy, could you please share? And could everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance.
Black flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellish.
Here.
Mr. Bishi.
Here.
Mr. Breezy.
Periodically here.
Ms. DiMaggio, Mr. Franco, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Bellman.
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
So.
That's me, sorry. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-11 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss collective bargaining agreement and/or negotiations related to the WTEA. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 15 minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of the closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, abstentions? The Board is now going into exact.
Yes, sorry.
Alright, I see the comment there. If you mute yourself, you won't be able to unmute it, so I'll have to. It's really for the public, unfortunately, that's the way. Alright. So I will refrain from.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Very difficult.
No, I guess.
Did he drop off? I, I think he dropped off. He should have provided an update about the negotiations.
I see a picture of him, but I don't see Patricia.
I think we lost Patricia too.
They're not in the waiting room, so they haven't tried to come back in.
Yes, I make a motion that the Board leave executive session reopen open session at this point. Second.
Is that what someone likes? Mrs. Taylor, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the Board is now in open session.
Okay, resolved that the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the March 23rd, 2020 Board Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Breezy.
Yes.
Ms. Chu. Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Correspondence and information. Dr. Mingle, please. No reports there. Thank you. Present's remarks, welcome everyone to our second virtual meeting. I hope everyone had an enjoyable spring break and weekend. I'm very excited to see that the public is able to participate virtually in this meeting. And we'll have two sections in the meeting where we welcome feedback and commentary. As Dr. Mingle indicated, please use the raise your hand indication and we will unmute you so that you can participate at the corresponding place in the agenda. As these times are very challenging and change is constant, I was very excited to read just some hours ago that the governors of the seven eastern states, New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, and Delaware will coordinate the reopening of economies, schools, and other important elements. Having said this, I'm looking forward to item 15 in our agenda where Dr. Mingle will provide us an update on our flexible learning days. Otherwise, you can see that our agenda is very brief today. We are focusing on the most critical business items today. But with that, you can expect that the next agenda will be significantly longer as we have include the items that we have pushed back at the last meeting and at this meeting. With that, I'm handing it over to Dr. Mingle for the superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman, and good evening, everyone, from wherever you are around the world coming in to participate in our meeting. As Mr. Bellman said, I'll give some remarks about the flexible instruction days and school closure later in the meeting. For now, I want to reiterate what he said where our April 27th meeting, we will begin moving into some regular business items that we've been putting off as we're trying to make sure we're addressing the most critical business first. That includes the final budget presentation and anticipated adoption of the final budget, so that's important for the public. We will, that information will be available the week ahead as it typically is for all of our meetings, so I'll save my other comments for the new business section.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Presentation, as we mentioned, it's a very brief agenda, there is no presentation plan for today. Discussion, we don't have any discussion items on the agenda. Anybody having a discussion item that doesn't fit into new business or into unfinished business? Seeing them. Commentary reports, do we have any commentary reports? As far as I'm aware, there were no committee meetings.
We had the ad hoc committee, I can report on that if you want.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mingle, please go ahead.
The week before spring break, the ad hoc strategic planning committee met and that committee was charged by Mr. Bellman a little bit beyond its original scope, just for the nature of the timing, to review some administrative recommendations related to the school closure. So the board members have have the minutes from that meeting, which are fairly extensive compared to most of our committee meeting minutes. If there's anything on there that is, that people want to talk about, that can be done in the new business section when we get to flexible instruction days. The other piece of that is, we reviewed an updated draft of the strategic plan proposal. That was revised based on committee feedback by the action team chairs. And Mr. Bellman and I will figure out the best approach for when that should be presented to the Board and the public, either on April 27th or May 11th, so that we can continue that process, which has been delayed, obviously, while we're dealing with the school.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle, for the commentary report. Moving on to public commentary on agenda items only. This includes the flexible instruction days. If you want to contribute, please state your name and address, and there are three minutes. Do we have any? There aren't any hands raised yet, we'll maybe give it a few seconds in case some. Yeah, I don't see any hands raised. If that is not, if you can't see it or it's not working, you can also type into the chat. I'm giving another minute if anybody wants to comment. And there's a second section later for any commentary from the public.
Mr. Ben, I have one comment here, I just want to see if it's somebody who wants to make a public comment or not.
Yes. Dr. Mingle, can you please unmute the participant? Can you please state your name and address and go ahead? Mrs. Goldstein, you can, you can.
Okay, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead and also name your address, please.
Okay, along the Goldstein, 40 Gates Avenue. So my question is, what is the plan going forward for not only instruction, but future dates like graduation, fifth grade event? You know, all these exciting things, the sixth, eighth grade graduation. Is there anything planned for that kind of stuff? Because I know the kids are just going crazy, they miss each other, they miss their teachers. Anything we can do remotely to get them together? We tried a Zoom, but that was insane. And I hope everybody's feeling good.
Thank you, Ms. Goldstein. I would believe that we postpone this question to after Dr. Mingle's update in the new business items. After that, there is another section for commentary. If there's any of your questions that has not been answered, please raise your hand again in the public commentary after that. And we'll go into these other questions or into more detail if something was not mentioned in the presentation.
Will do.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to participate at the public commentary at that time? I see nothing in the chat, Dr. Mingle, was there any other hand?
No, I don't see any others.
Thank you. With this, Mrs. Sun, could you please?
Do you want to see if anyone wants to pull anything?
I'm really sorry, absolutely, yes. Does anybody want to pull out any item on the agenda for either a separate discussion or for a separate vote? Please state yes if you do, I see nobody. Mrs. Sun.
None. Thank you. Motion to approve agenda items A1, A2, B1, and C1, C2.
Do we have a second?
I'm stuck in it.
You state who it is that's saying it.
That is Mr. Breezy.
Thank you.
You can call me Dave.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Breezy.
Yes.
Ms. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motions carry.
Thank you very much. Moving to unfinished business, I see there is nothing in that section. Moving on to new business. Do we want to reshuffle the order to first have the middle school fields, the NGASBA resolution, and then the flexible instruction days? I think that will allow us a little bit more time to spend on the flexible instruction days. Moving on to middle school fields. There was an update sent to us that there is a new proposal from the architect. Dr. Mingle, do you want to share the new proposal with Mrs. Leona?
I would defer to Mrs. Lenhardt if.
Right, so as the Board requested, there is a second proposal, it's much more scaled down, a little bit of my concern is the value, I do understand there's a difference in the price as the Board had requested, but I guess my concern is without a better vision of the cost of the vision, it's the Board's decision whether that $6,000 is still has value or not.
Any feedback from our fellow board members?
Is there a summary that could be like a 30-second elevator pitch that could be shared in the meeting of what that updated proposal contained and perhaps the differences?
It was in the superintendent's update, I can go to it, I think that would be the best thing to do. While I look for it, I will say that I remember one of the things that we were losing in this scaled down one was the ability to go back and finesse the vision, so they would do a work product and then we would get to go back and work on it a little bit more closely. So directly from the superintendent's update, which albeit was prior to break, the difference between the first proposal of $14,000 from February 27th and the second proposal of $6,000 from March 23rd is the first proposal includes a step whereby the results of the work are brought back to the district to allow for further input and refinement. And the first proposal includes a conceptual layout and corresponding cost estimates. So conceptual layout up to a maximum of two with corresponding cost estimates whereby the second one just provides an order of magnitude estimate for generic turf fields. So when speaking with the architects, they said that basically they would just take the number of square feet, I guess is the measurement, and say going rate for turf field is X times number of square feet, as opposed to the more expensive estimate would delineate the different upgrades that could be made to a dugout, let's say, or, you know, improvements to the fields. So I think that the smaller estimate is just a gross one and the set, the larger, the more exacting one would give you a better game financially.
Thank you.
I do have a question, but I don't know how to raise my hand. Hand raised. The first, refresh my memory just a little bit, Pat, I, I think I recall that the first estimate, the larger estimate also include included a research with regard to the status of wetlands?
As did the second, so I.
Okay, it's in both.
Estimates side by side, and I pulled out what differed.
Okay, alright.
So will this be a motion at the next meeting as to whether or not to approve the scaled down version?
Mr. Franco, you're very quiet, I have difficulties hearing you.
So will this be a motion on the next meeting to approve the, the reduced scope? What's the process going forward now?
We do not have a motion yet, we would have to put in a motion to either today or any other meeting to either approve the reduced scope, to approve the full scope, and if there is no motion, that means we will not do anything.
Just for clarity, for clarity sake, one more question. So if, if we do the two phases of the scope as it's laid out now, would there be, would there be a cost difference from the original? The original quote? Like if we did it instead of doing it all once, if we did phase one, phase two, do we get the full scope at the same cost? Or is there an additional cost for splitting up the, the phases?
That was not discussed.
That's exactly what I thought could happen, that we first do the 6,000, and if we're happy with the result, we could spend the additional difference between the 14,000 and then get the two revisions of where we really want to scope it out, that's how I understand it.
So I think the question is, is the sum of two greater than the comprehensive proposal? And I do not know the answer to that.
Yeah, maybe we could find that out, and then we can make the motion at the next meeting for it.
Um, I have a question.
Yes, please, Ms. Sun.
Thank you. Um, I'm a little, I have some questions about the utility of the cheaper option, and those questions really be raised in executive or with the finance committee? Because they relate to some of the potential use, which we were going to put this estimate?
So what's the proposal, to send it to the finance committee for discussion, the item?
Or, or to go back into executive side, ask the questions there, but there, yeah, I don't want to say anymore, there are some questions I have about this that relates like, I think finance committee knows what I'm talking about, to the, to how we want to use this, this information.
Since we are meeting in between the next board meeting with the finance committee meeting, I think it might be prudent to put it onto the agenda.
I think so, that'd be good.
That's about that from the Board. Any more items to discuss about this? Otherwise, I will send it to the finance committee for clarification. Moving on to the NGASBA resolution. In the agenda, when you click on the blue link, you can see the resolution that we are proposing. Only discussion item.
Yeah.
Mrs. Sun, please.
Thank you. So I have some concerns about the adequacy of the resolution proposed by the State School Board Association. I took a look at the Assembly Bill, which passed 79 to 0, though it was unanimous passing with only one person absent. And in addition to the language which they're addressing in this potential resolution regarding the payment of the, by the municipalities to the county or to the school district, there was also a language in there allowing municipality leeway under the tax code to defer payments due to them by taxpayers. My guess is that that right there is, is something we also should be thinking about, because if the municipalities defer the receipt of tax payments, that's of course going to impact their ability to send taxes on to the authorities, which they owe them to the county and the school district. What I ideally would have loved to see the state bar, or the state School Board Association do would be to craft language whereby any collections by the municipality which are due to the county or to the school district, that those be paid promptly. Because mortgage companies are likely to continue to make the tax payments. And to leave municipalities with the ability to negotiate deals with individual taxpayers who do not have mortgage companies. But I don't think there's any, we could send this resolution, it passed the Assembly 79-0. There is, there's no way that just saying kill the Assembly Bill, that that's going to work, but if we were crafting it in the, in, with the approach being whatever you get, you should forward on, that would be in view a resolution I'm more comfortable with. Thoughts? Anyone?
Mrs. Lenhardt talked about this today, and both of our professional organizations have advised us that Senator Sweeney has said that he is not going to post it in the Senate, even though it was unanimously passed in the Assembly.
Okay.
Due to pressure from organizations. That's not in writing anywhere, that's just what our associations are telling us. School boards continue to send these updates about this resolution, I just thought that might be context that's helpful, I don't, it's hard to say, they did have a session today and it didn't come up to my knowledge.
And the Senate does not have another voting schedule on the calendar. The Assembly does, the Assembly is voting on 5/4, so things that have passed the Senate can make it through the Assembly in two weeks, but not the converse, converse.
I have some questions.
Ms. Sun, please.
Um, so is it, I, I haven't read the bill, but I've seen like summaries of it, and I thought it also, if it did delay property taxes, I thought it also allowed repurposing restricted funds, repurposing reserve funds, and then it provided districts with short-term funding with the delay. Are, are those true, and wouldn't that mitigate our, the delay issues? Well, the two, the first two were just beneficial for other reasons, but then the third one, if they provided short-term funding for that, for the delay, doesn't that mitigate?
So could I answer?
Yes.
So every month, our tax check, well, let me rephrase that. January to June, our tax levy is $3.4 million. Although we have a large amount of money in capital reserve right now, we have to make a large payment in July for paying back our note. So it, I've said all along, the concerns about state aid are substantial, but our concerns about the tax levy are much more substantial in this district. The tax levy is a $3.4 million check each month, so we'd have a hard time with that. Especially given the fact that we're going to take over $4 million out of our reserves in July.
So based on what Patricia said and what you said, Pat, about the Senate, would this just be a symbolic gesture, or we, would we be actually doing something if we sent it?
So the resolution says that we would also, I would, on your behalf, send it also to your representatives, so it doesn't have any, it's political pressure.
But we also, if, if the, if our municipality decides to delay tax payments, there won't be any money to get, right? Is that, that how that works?
Well, they're tied together.
They're tied together, yeah. But they're going to, my hand.
Please.
They're going to get some money, I mean, mortgage companies typically ask for this stuff, so they're going to make the payments by May 1st for any, any properties, residential properties and commercial properties that are subject to mortgages. I, I don't happen to know in this town what percentage of, of our, of the tax revenue is, comes in from third-party services, I don't know that. But that we should at least get. The troubling part of this, this bill to me is that it is a blanket extension of time for the municipality to make those payments regardless of whether or not they're sitting on the money.
Anything else, anybody else? Otherwise, in my opinion, forward with the resolution, just as a sign. As Ms. Leona indicated, we would get into cash flow problems if we have a delay in payment, even if we receive the payments later. We would have to look into some form of debt. And I would really like to avoid that. And just as a political statement, I would be for sending such a resolution.
Yeah, I agree, I have no real influence over whether or not this is going to happen, but we as well tell this, tell the Senate that we don't want it to.
Yeah.
If it's going to happen or it's not. We should be on record, at least, and we, we.
Ms. Sun.
Thank you. Yeah, well, we're all sitting here in our positions as Board members of the Board of Education, so in that capacity, I agree, we send the resolution. As a taxpayer, though, you know, in these circumstances, I would certainly want municipalities to be able to negotiate payment terms with individual payors, individual taxpayers who might be in difficulty. And I'm, I'm betting that was the drive behind the bill.
Just as a format to move forward, if we want to send this, we have to make a motion and get a majority, is that correct?
Sorry, Mr. Bellman, could you repeat yourself, I couldn't hear you.
To move for, if we want to move forward. To move for, if we want to move forward with that, we have to make a motion about this, get a second and have a call.
That's a true statement, and then I would be responsible for passing it on to the polit- politicians.
Understood. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
Pat, is there a middle ground, like what Patricia is saying, like making an amendment to this? Or do we have to submit it the way this, the state school board wrote it?
No, the board can absolutely amend it.
Do we want to talk about that? Or?
Please go ahead.
I mean, I'm just thinking that, like, I, I understand Patricia's point and I do wanna, I do want to send something as political pressure, but also recognize that, you know, as just a citizen, I think if the municipality wants to do that, I would actually be in support of it, to support our community members. So I don't know if there is, if we can amend the language to say something closer to what Patricia is suggesting, like, we know you're, you know, I don't know how you'd write it, but whoever you get money from.
I'm also just gonna share one financial fact. Municipalities are able to have much more in reserve than school districts are. School districts are allowed to have two percent of the general operating, and in our district, that's a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, okay? I don't know how much Warren has behind it, but I'm going to venture a guess that it is substantial.
I also think it might be not our place to say whether or not we think the town should be able to negotiate tax deferments with people that don't have mortgages versus those that do. I don't know why we would get involved in that conversation as a, as a school board. I think we should avoid the topic completely.
Comment?
Ms. Song?
Okay. Uh, we don't have to get into that topic at all. All you have to do is modify the resolution to object specifically to the language where they discuss cessation of payments to school districts. You don't have to touch the rest of the resolution or the rest of the bill at all. Just narrow in what we're calling for them to not do.
So what would you eliminate from this?
Well, I didn't write up anything, but hang on, I've gotta get some light on here.
Maybe, while Trish is looking at that, Pat, you said that there's an ability for people, uh, entities to get financing for the missed payments?
So I didn't look into that as deeply. I could certainly look into that. Generally speaking, we're not a district that has to utilize some short-term financing. Couple of years ago, the state moved the June state aid payments to July. And there is a mechanism for districts who need to do short-term financing. This district has never had to admit itself of that. I would have to educate myself on the process.
I'm just thinking if, if we're talking about taxpayers delaying their payment and an entity has to finance that delay in payment, either the municipality can finance that delay in payment or the school board can. And I think that it's the municipality that has the resources, I think even you were saying surplus, ha- has the actual cash on hand to finance that delay in taxpayer payments. So it's much more logical in my mind to have the municipality finance these late payments than the school board. So while we can acknowledge that, and your proposed wording, Ms. Song, I still don't, i- it's not illogical for me to think that we should finance this versus the municipality.
I have some language.
Please go ahead. Uh, Mr. Bish, keep it down, right?
No, yes, yes. I'm looking forward to the.
I'm sorry.
No, no, this is good.
Okay. Um, uh, given that the first whereas clause actually narrowly identifies the portion of the bill which we're talking about, I would pick that same language back up in the resolve section and have the first resolved read as follows. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education urges the state senate and the governor to oppose the provision in A three nine oh-two, which would authorize the Department of Community Affairs to permit municipalities to delay the transmission of property tax revenues to school districts under the gubernatorial declared emergencies.
Do we have any comments towards that?
I have a general question.
Mr. Bish?
What is the timing for the need of such a resolution? In other words, is this something we can get in black and white on paper in front of us? We meet in two weeks, or is this something that needs to be passed tonight?
The fact that there's no scheduled senate vote means that you probably are okay in two weeks. Ms. Lohner, would you agree with that?
I would. I would. An educated guess. Yes.
It's also possible that it could be moved by them because maybe they take it off the, you know, they, they withdraw it or something.
Agreed, yeah, so I'm.
So the, the resolution itself is a Google Doc, and if the board wanted to see Mrs. Zhang's recommended modifications, I could do them in real time. If that's helpful. If that's too confusing, then we won't do that.
But if there is really no time limitation, I think we can also discuss that further on the next agenda. Any feedback about that? Any concern with having it on? I do not see any. Okay. No, let's make the change, please, and send that out, and then at the next meeting, we'll discuss that further.
And that, that was no disrespect to Mrs. Zhang's work on the fly. I appreciate that. I just.
No problem.
Black and white person want to read through it and print it out. It's just the way my brain is, so.
Mrs. Zhang, if you would be able to send me the wording that you recommended, that would be helpful.
No problem.
Very good. Thank you. Now, probably a topic where a lot of the public has joined us for, feedback on the flexible instruction days. Dr. Mingle has prepared some words about that. Uh, Dr. Mingle, could you please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bellman. So, um, I mean, the, the number one question that will drive any other question and answer related to it is, are we reopening before the end of the school year? And as I think everybody knows, I've shared it in my weekly now videos and messages to the community. The governor has made it very clear that that is his decision to make at this point, and that he will make an updated announcement no later than this Friday. He, in a press conference today, said he expects to make that announcement earlier than Friday. And I think the fact that they created this regional consortium of governors right now with the other states that haven't announced what they're doing with their schools suggests that there will be a joint decision this week. I don't know what it'll be. We have pretty late schools in New Jersey, so there's maybe a potential we can come back for a few weeks, but I wouldn't count on that being the case. We are at the administrative level, having conversations that have already begun about not only the short term, which is what you're basically seeing from us right now. You know, how do we ramp up the use of video? How do we create class meeting opportunities? How do we roll out new learning for students? That's what you're seeing in our communications right before spring break and what you'll see this week in the community briefings. But we're also having discussions about things like Mrs. Goldstein's questions about what does eighth grade graduation look like in a virtual world? What do fifth grade and kindergarten ceremonies look like? Um, I'm meeting with the PTO presidents tomorrow to talk about things like the fifth grade event. You know, a lot of the seventh and eighth grade overnight trips, for example, a lot of big questions with, you know, unprecedented situations behind them. The one benefit we have is the Somerset County superintendents are meeting every Monday and Thursday to basically go around the county and talk about how each group is handling these kinds of decisions. There are companies now offering graduation, virtual graduation packages that are actually pretty cool, um, considering they didn't exist two weeks ago. Um, where, you know, you can recognize every student individually and have, through a YouTube live broadcast, a graduation ceremony. That's really an eighth grade kind of a decision, if, if we have to get there. But we have all kinds, we have, we have a whole long list of activities and events at the end of the year, concerts and musicals and all that kind of stuff. Once we know for sure what the decision is, then we'll start ticking them off one at a time and make the best plans that we can with an eye towards consistency. So one of the, you know, one of the facets of the proposed strategic plan around equity and consistency, one of the, is also a unintended benefit of this situation right now is that we're getting people together and trying to make decisions across the district. So when we make a decision about how we handle fifth grade, for example, we can make that sort of a decision district-wide as best we can. I hope that we'll have clarity from the governor this week because I think uncertainty is much worse than actually trying to address whatever the decisions are that we have to make. And that's on the student experience side. We also have things like ongoing IEP meetings and decisions about student programming and therapies in the special ed world. We have, I have a meeting on Thursday with our summer fund administrative staff to decide um, what are the models of what it could look like, because there's a possibility we may be told that we can't bring kids back together even in the summer. And if that's the case, how do we run summer fund and ESY in a virtual world to try to maintain those programs as best we can? In our county meeting today, we were told that the state may make a statewide pronouncement about whether or not we can even run summer programs this summer. So all of those things are big question marks that every district is just kind of waiting for information. What I can say to the board and to the community is our leadership meetings, our task force meetings, we're constantly trying to think ahead to what are the things that we need to think about, not only today, but next week and next month as we, as we kind of go forward. Probably best to maybe leave it at that point and then take questions, and I can, you know, expound on whatever topics are most interesting to the members of the board, and then during public commentary, I can address other things that come up.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. This concludes the new business item, and we're moving on to public commentary on any topic. Once again, members of the public, this is the chance to participate. Once you raise your hand or add something to the chat that you want to contribute, please state your name and address once you're unmuted, and you have three minutes. And Mrs. Goldstein, where are your questions addressed by that?
Hi, am I there?
Yes, you are.
Do I have to state my address again?
I think we have it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, okay, a couple of questions. One is, um, the current curriculum. I understand that it's hard. Teachers are at home. They have their own kids, but I, I also think that the students are not getting everything that they can. So if a student should need extra work because they're finishing the three hours in an hour and a half, um, is there any, like, are there any extras that the teachers can give them? Um, and as far as the fifth grade event is concerned, um, I know that a lot of the moms, um, really want this to happen. We have the money for it. And we were hoping that maybe it could be done sometime in September for back in school. So maybe that's something to think about for the big events, the, you know, the eighth grade event and seventh grade. You know, maybe we could just take them out of school for a day in September. Um, because these kids, they really deserve it. They're working so hard and, you know, sitting at home doing nothing. So, um, yeah, so challenges, to challenge the kids is really the most important thing on my mind.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goldstein. Um, Dr. Mingle, you want?
Yeah, I can comment at the end. If there's other public comments, I can circle back to whatever questions come up.
Makes sense. Yeah, thank you. Any other contribution?
Here, I have one more. I'm gonna unmute.
Yes, please go ahead. Please state your name and address, and please go ahead.
Yes. Hi, good evening. This is Catherine Lubek, eleven, Jessica Lane. In the event that school closures are extended through the end of the academic year, how will grading be addressed? Will this be on a pass-fail basis for not only the elementary school, but the middle school as well? Has this been discussed, or have there been decisions made?
I'll gladly address that one, too.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or commentary? I don't see anything in the chat. Dr. Mingle, do you see any?
Hmm, I don't see any other ones, no.
I think I want you to address these items, and then I want to have another question round for the public.
So, um, I'll just go in order. The first question about if students need more, so one of, just like any school day, I would say that parents always, their first place to go with a concern like that is to the teacher of that student. What we get from our parent surveys are, even in the same homeroom, sometimes one parent will say, there's too much homework, or there's too much work, and one parent will say, there's not enough. So I think it's important for parents to feel comfortable like in the regular school year in person, to reach out to the teacher to express, you know, you said this should take them three hours, but it's only taking my child an hour. What else can we do? Because I think they need to hear that feedback directly to, to understand, so that's totally fine. We're constantly talking about what the work looks like, and it's natural that before spring break especially, when the directive to our staff was primarily status quo, try to keep things afloat, that for some kids, that may not have been at the level of challenge they're used to. The work that's happening now is moving from that model to a model of new instruction. In a distance learning model, it's not going to be the same, obviously, as if everybody was in person in a, in a school classroom with our teachers. But I think people will start to see the ramp up taking place this week, and certainly as we go forward. But again, I would go back to the individual teacher-parent relationship as a starting point. In our update to the community by this Friday, we'll have some more information about what people should be seeing as far as challenge and new learning goes. So I think that'll help clarify some things as the week goes on. With the fifth grade event, um, well, again, we'll talk about that tomorrow with the PTO presidents. I'm sure that'll come up as an option. There are districts at the high school level that are doing really creative things. For example, instead of having their proms in May, they're having them during Thanksgiving weekend as a reunion for the graduating class to come back. So there are certainly creative solutions out there where instead of just canceling it, we think about maybe there's a back-to-school event we can do for what will then be the incoming, the sixth grade, you know. Totally open to any creative ideas. Not only can you share them with the PTO presidents in the case of the fifth grade event, if there are things like that, you want to make sure we take into consideration, you can use the district's COVID-nineteen mail address, which is just covid-nineteen@warnteeboe.org, and we'll make sure that the idea is kept to the right people. That, um, we had a conversation this morning about that with the seventh grade trip as well. Whether or not that could become an early eighth grade trip to Fairview Lakes in the fall for the current seventh graders. So totally open to those kinds of ideas. And then as far as grading, that is something that we're working on this Wednesday with our staff during their professional development time, so I don't want to say right now, but we will have clarity this week about how we will grade for fourth marking period. The guidance from the Department of Education is that while grading is an individual district prerogative, they recommend that we take a do-no-harm approach to grading for the fourth marking period, where students could certainly perform stronger because of what they do during distance learning, but that they should not be penalized for what they experienced during distance learning. Because there are families, including in Warren, where kids are struggling to have access, or there might be three or four kids at home all competing for internet bandwidth and everything else. So we will make, we will get clarification out to the community about grading for fourth marking period. We've also, we'll also be in touch with the high school because the eighth grade to ninth grade transition is where the grading matters more than anywhere else.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. With this, I want to ask the community once again for feedback or commentary. Mrs. Song, are you raising the hand as a community member? You're muted.
No, I was trying to hit commute button.
I'm sorry. Anybody from the public, please add a note into the chat or use the hands-up feature. I'll give thirty more seconds.
While people are looking to do that, I just want to make one other comment if I could. Um, our participation rate in the parent survey has dropped off from almost three hundred to two hundred, one hundred. And so in today's community briefing, I mentioned, it's, that feedback is extremely important to the way that we're taking input in because it helps us prioritize what the highest areas of concern are. So for the people on the call, you know, it, you don't have to fill in every single open-ended question with a comment, but even just the, how are you doing? Those, those answers are really helpful to us because we divert resources based on the answers. So I would just spread the word. Um, the Friday survey, at least, even if people aren't paying attention Monday through Thursday, Friday is when we ask the survey of the community, and it helped, it definitely helps us make decisions. it helped, it definitely helps us make decisions.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. I don't see anything in the chat. Dr. Mingle, did you receive any? Thank you very much. Where's that adjourned? Mrs. Song, could you please?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Thank you, Mr. Vizzi.
You're welcome.
Favor.
I.
Bye.
Oppose abstentions. The meeting is now adjourned. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening.